In the house we moved into, my honey-do list is never going to be finished.
Never ending.
Never, never.
I'd like to call to order the September 27th, 1921, 2021 meeting of the Westfield City Council. Shall we stand and do the pledge?
Pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, with equal means, with liberty and justice for all.
Joe Edwards is going to do the invocation for us. Councilman Edwards?
Heavenly Father, we thank you for all the blessings that you allow us to have. You're an awesome God. We ask that you look with favor upon our proceedings this evening. Guide us, direct us. We ask these things in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
Cindy Gassert, could you call the roll, please? Note the presence of a quorum.
Here.
Scott Frye.
Here.
Mike Johns.
Here.
Jake Gilbert.
Here.
Cindy Spaljeric.
Here.
Scott Willis.
Here.
Joe Edwards.
Here.
We do have a quorum.
Thank you, Cindy. The first item on our agenda tonight is approval of minutes of September 13th, 2021. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes? So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Scott Willis, seconded by Joe Edwards. Cindy, would you call the roll, please?
Cindy Spaljeric?
Yes.
Jake Gilbert?
Yes.
Mike Johns?
Yes.
Scott Frye?
Yes.
Troy Patton?
Yes.
Joe Edwards?
Yes.
Scott Willis?
Yes.
Motion carries seven zero.
Thank you, Cindy. The next item on the agenda is the claims docket for September 27th, 2021. Are there any questions from councilors regarding any of the claim items? I do have one question. The claims for the DWA, it looks like we have a first quarter and a second quarter payment to the DWA. Does anybody in the council remember what the history of those payments are and why they've been made?
I had requested information about that. We have a contract dating back to at least 2010 that allowed for a monthly, well, if it didn't expire, it could continue by the month, I guess, is the best way to say it. So that has been occurring all throughout this time. They do bill quarterly, and I was able to get the information that was submitted from the chamber to do that because the DWA is now part of the Chamber of Commerce.
Cindy, you feel it's appropriate that the council consider moving on with that contract or reviewing the contract?
That might be something we should look at separately just for the approving of the claims. I think that there is enough to approve those claims this evening. Yeah.
The, I think that's the only other question I have. Oh, there's some BKD invoices that are on here, Cindy Gassert.
Mm-hmm.
Are those the ones that had been moved to the other account to be paid?
I believe so, yeah.
Okay, thank you. Those are my only questions, Cindy. Any other councilor's questions? Do I have a motion to approve the claims?
So moved.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Motion made by Joe Edwards, seconded by Cindy Spaljeric. Cindy Gassert, would you please call the roll?
Troy Patton?
Yes.
Scott Frye?
Yes.
Mike Johns?
Yes.
Jake Gilbert?
Yes.
Cindy Spaljeric?
Yes.
Scott Willis?
Yes.
Joe Edwards?
Yes.
Motion carries seven zero.
There are no miscellaneous business or special recognition items this evening, so we'll move on to old business. First item of old business, Resolution 21-124, Common Council of the City of Westfield, Indiana declaring a certain area within the city an economic revitalization area, qualifying certain property improvements with tax abatement, and setting the time and place for a public hearing regarding the same. This particular resolution had a council introduction on July 26th, and it is up for adoption consideration this evening. And I think Kai Chuck was going to have a presentation and tell us more about this.
Sorry about that. For your consideration tonight, the economic revitalization area is to be located at 360 East 186th Street, which is approximately four acres at Grand Park. It is approximately, directly east of the Pacer Centers, right off 186th Street. The abatement consideration will be on 37,000 square feet on this property. The investment will be approximately 5.165 million, and it will retain 15 jobs and create 37 new jobs in the future. The abatement in consideration is 40% flat throughout the 10 years, which represents the value of the second floor of the entire facility. The second floor would house the headquarters and relocate some other employees from the company around the state. Casey Wright and Tate Schultz, the principals of the company, are here in attendance. However, Eric Dolphitt will do a brief presentation. Both Eric, Casey, Tate, and myself will be available for questions afterwards. Council Eric Dolphitt, Church Churchill and Antrim, 116th North Union, here in Westfield, Indiana. Thank you for the opportunity, Brent, present here tonight. When we had the introduction, there were a couple of questions that we'd like to address today and will be available for additional questions. The first is, the abatement will not pay for the entirety of the second floor. What this is, they're essentially taking a corporate headquarters and we're putting it on top of an existing building or what will be an existing building. We don't build this now. It's not going to be built in Westfield. This will pay for, this abatement will help close the gap to allow for the building of this, but it's not going to pay for the entirety of it. The second floor is estimated to be about a million dollars of additional improvement, and this will be approximately about an abatement over the course of the 10 years of about $400,000. There was also a suggestion that there had previously been a lawsuit between Wright's and the city. There was never a lawsuit filed. Everything's been properly resolved and taken care of to the satisfaction, and I can guarantee you there's not been any windfall to our clients. They very much would have liked to have stayed, but were unable to stay because of commitments that it's worked out the way it was supposed to work out. Finally, I do want to emphasize that beyond just property taxes, this is going to bring a significant number of white-collar jobs. It's going to bring five different businesses that will be housed on this second floor. According to our studies, it's going to have direct and indirect economic impact of about $10 million. So this should pay for itself pretty easily over the course of time here in Westfield. It's also really going to bring a sports-themed business, a sports headquarters here to Grand Park, and hopefully get us to the critical mass so we keep building, building, and building. We'll be available for questions. Again, we have Ms. Wright, Mr. Schultz here, as well as Kai. If you've got any questions, we can answer for you today.
Questions from councilors?
I guess I have a few comments I'd like to make. And I mentioned some of these at the beginning. I do have a concern that we're doing a flat rate on the whole building, and in my estimation, it seems like the second story is something I would consider an abatement for, and I would have preferred a standard conventional graduated abatement for the second floor. It's troubling to me when we have what is essentially a gym use on the ground floor that's part of this abatement then. And we're in Grand Park, and we were not going to be doing abatements at Grand Park. So this is something that is disconcerting to me to be considering at all. I understand the business of sport, and I understand the way that this is adding that second story, and so it's not just a gym, but on the bottom it is a gym. And again, if it was just a gym there, I wouldn't entertain the abatement. So it leaves me in a quandary because I thought that it would make a lot more sense to allow the graduated abatement for the top of the building.
So the graduated abatement would actually result in a smaller amount going to the city. With the straight 40% all the way across, the city actually gets more, if you work through the math. Also, the city, if we did it the way with the graduated amount, would get nothing in the first year. So here it becomes a flat year, and the city gets the growth as it comes along. With regards to the specific question, if this were someplace else, I think this would be an abatement that we'd all be able to support. The fact that it's on top of a building is unique. This gym is going to be built no matter what. The steel has been ordered. They're going to build that gym. So appreciating that that exists, in order to close the gap, the 40% flats what's needed in order to put this corporate headquarters on the top. It's a hard concept to get our minds wrapped around. It took us a while to work through this. We started talking about it with the city in February. But I'm appreciative of your comments. I just think that if we were to put this someplace else, those comment, that concern probably wouldn't exist. It's just the fact we're putting it on top of an existing structure, or not quite existing, but a structure that's going to be built anyway.
Well, I mean, my, I would have the same feeling if it was somewhere else because we just typically don't provide abatements for gyms. I mean, that's just not something we do.
But I want to emphasize what we're abating is not the gym. It's the office, corporate headquarters on top of the gym.
Kind of.
Kind of. That's a good, kind of, yes. That's fair.
So I have a question, probably for Kai, and I just want to make sure that I understand. Once we establish this revitalization area, what happens? What is the, does that, once the tax abatement comes to an end, does that revitalization area automatically roll off the books and it's no longer considered an ERA, or is there a process that needs to take place there?
I would defer that to legal, to Manny, to answer that question.
The ERA stays. You would have to take action to get it off the books, so to speak. But it's a mechanism to allow this kind of abatement to happen. That's the first step.
If I could follow up, what's the process that we would take as a council once that expires?
I haven't looked at it before. It's a new question. I'd be happy to track it down. But the process for obviously establishing the ERA, that's the only way you can take advantage of the availability of this mechanism. That's the first question, first time I've gotten a question on how to undo it. Happy to look into it.
Let me follow up with the question. That pacifical partial in this particular case, correct me if I'm wrong, Manny, is once the ER, once the abatement ends, in order to get abatement again for that property, they would have to come back to the council.
You have to show addition, exactly, right. The establishment of the area allows you to take advantage of this mechanism, but it's not as though...
It's not automatic, sorry.
No, correct. You have to go through the same process. Oh, that's what probably I haven't gotten the question before, is because you have to go through the same process with every time there's a new and additional development. Under the statute, it has to be new development, right? So it can't be existing development, so they can't get an abatement for the same structure. It would have to be a new structure using the same economic revitalization area. In some rare instances, it can be new manufacturing equipment, and there's a whole list of issues and things you cannot abate for. You know, there are about 15 golf courses, environmental areas, et cetera. Yeah, good point, Kai, thanks.
So essentially, they would have to come back for, come back to the council, come back to the city for a new abatement on that property.
Sure, absolutely.
Kai? Kai, what kind of employment does this new facility bring? I mean, is it a, that's part of tax abatement, is not only the facilities, but additional employment in wages. Does that meet a county standard for...
Yeah, the county, all of that, Eric, respond to that. So to answer specifically on the kinds of jobs, these would all be management and executive-level jobs. These would not be teachers at the gym. These would not be warehouse workers. That's not what would be employed on the second floor. This would be a consolidation of five different businesses, and the corporate headquarters for those five different businesses. The licensing company, the Ninja Zone franchise, licensees are across the world, including China, the fulfillment house, the people who are doing logistics and things like that in that regard. It would have the folks that are in charge of the licensing board, the sports licensing board, I'm not saying that the right way. They're in charge of the entire sport of Ninja Zone, would be headquartered here in Westfield as well, which is significant. Wright's Gyms, which does own the gyms across central Indiana, has five or six gyms here in central Indiana, would be headquartered there. And there's also a sports entrepreneurship company that would be located on the second floor that's already been in discussions with regards to some of the innovative things that Grand Park is doing and partnering with Grand Park on its innovation hub. So that's what's going on the second floor. On the first floor, you'd have typical gym teachers, and you may have some warehousing down there as well.
And if we want Eric to have that laid out, if we have to.
It does, yeah.
How many is?
Thirty-seven jobs.
Thirty-seven additional?
Yep, 37 additional jobs on the second floor.
And Councilman Edwards, every year, they would have to come before you, before June 15th.
So 37 better-paying jobs.
Thirty-seven executives and managers, yes, better-paying jobs.
You would measure substantial compliance every year.
I'm personally concerned with the tax abatement in Grand Park. I think it is our most highly desirable property in the city of Westfield. We've invested a lot, many, many millions of dollars. I've heard the number 100 million dollars in Grand Park. And where an abatement like this, I think, might serve us well in another area. I think that we, I think it's, I just don't think it's necessary at Grand Park. I think that if I was a corporation and if I ran the sports area and I had an opportunity to foot my headquarters there, I'd jump at the opportunity with or without an abatement. I can't imagine putting my headquarters in Noblesville or Sheridan or anyplace else as compared to in Grand Park. So I am not in favor of this abatement.
I'll just make a comment, and Mike, I appreciate that. The only thing I would say is that I don't see businesses flocking to Grand Park.
Exactly.
I mean, look at all the land out there, and we're not collecting anything on it currently. And there are sports corporations around, and we're not getting them. I mean, I'm not disagreeing with what you're saying. I'm just...
I just don't feel we should sell ourselves short.
Yeah. I mean, there is so much ground out there to be had. I mean, it's, I mean, open the doors and let's see who'll come. Because at least we'll be collecting something. Because right now, we're not collecting anything on that bare land. I mean, you know, incrementally, so.
And if I could add, I mean, once you crack the ice, I think you'll see others coming. But sometimes you just got to incentivize for that first company to come in, and then once that happens, you hope that it snowballs into other things. We saw that at North Point as well, the explosion. Once we got fashion in, it just started coming. So the hope is, not guaranteed, but the hope is that that will occur as well.
Any other questions, Councilors? Can I have a motion to, on this issue?
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 21-124.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, a motion's been made to approve Resolution 21-124 by Scott Willis, seconded by Troy Patton. Cindy Gassert, would you call the roll, please?
Joe Edwards?
Yes.
Scott Willis?
Yes.
Cindy Spaljeric?
No.
Jake Gilbert?
Yes.
Mike Johns?
No.
Scott Frye?
Yes.
Troy Patton?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries five two.
Next item is Resolution 21-127, additional appropriation for the library. This had a council introduction on September 13th. It is up for a public hearing this evening. And the chair, I guess, recognizes Cheryl Solers. And Cheryl will let you give kind of a recap, and then we'll open it to a public hearing.
All right. I'm Cheryl Solers. I'm the executive director of the Westfield-Washington Public Library. Over the past several years, the library has received special distributions, and because of not going over the non-farm growth quotient in those years, we have not been able to spend those funds, but would like to do so now to pay professional service fees, architect fees, legal fees, et cetera, that we have incurred for the new library project. These expenses will be reimbursed to the rainy day fund by the new library bond proceeds, once they have been received. But we wanted to do an additional appropriation in case there was a delay in receiving those funds before the end of 2021. On December 20, on September 26th, that's today, we are asking for your approval of the additional appropriation. Right now, it's just a public hearing, so if there are any questions, I'd be happy to entertain.
Cheryl, can you just stay there for a second, and we're going to open the public hearing at 7:21. Chris, do we have any cards?
No cards.
Okay, okay. Let's give it about a minute to see if anyone calls in. Okay, let's close the public meeting, hearing at 7:22. Counselors, any questions, comments? Hearing done, can I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion has been made by Joe Edwards, seconded by Jake Gilbert, to approve Resolution 21-127, additional appropriation for the library. Cindy, would you please call the roll?
Cindy Spaljeric?
Yes.
Scott Willis?
Because I'm on the library board, I will abstain from this vote.
Okay. Jake Gilbert?
Yes.
Mike Johns?
Yes.
Scott Frye?
Yes.
Troy Patton?
Yes.
Joe Edwards?
Yes.
Motion carries six one.
Should be six zero one.
Six zero, that's what I wrote down. That's just not what I said.
Okay, thank you. The next item on the agenda, ordinance 21-43, library budget. This had a council introduction on September 13th. It's up for a public hearing tonight. Cheryl, do you have a couple words on the budget?
Yes, I will just say that because of the library, new library bond, bonds, we will be going over the six-year non-growth personal income, which is 4.3% for 2022, and so we will need council approval of our budget because of that situation. So that's why we are before you today.
Thank you, Cheryl.
And this is just the public hearing.
Right. And I'm going to open it for the public hearing now at 7:24, and we'll give it about 60 seconds and see if we have any call-ins. Okay, we'll close the public hearing at 7:25. Counselors, do you have any questions or comments? Okay, hearing done then. We'll just, Cheryl, we look forward to seeing you back here on October 11th.
Okay, I look forward to being here. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Next item on our agenda, ordinance 21-41, the 2022 budget presentation. This item had a council introduction on September 13th, and it is up for a public hearing this evening. Do we have someone, Johnny, Edward, or Troy? I'm sorry. Todd Bertrand, you're going to do the presentation and the budget?
We'll just be brief this evening as the timeline gets pulled up, just to reorient everyone where we're at in this process. Nothing has changed to this point as far as what has been entered into the forms, and even the contents of this presentation has been a part of, I think, the last agenda as well. So with that, I yield to your public hearing.
We're going to open the floor to a public hearing. Chris?
Go for it, Marla Ailer. Push, there we go. Sorry. Hi, Marla Ailer, 1602 East 203rd Street. Good public participation practices can help governments be more accountable and responsible, or excuse me, responsive to their communities, and can also improve the public's perception of governmental performance and the value the public receives from their government. Transparency is a core value of governmental budgeting. Developing a transparent budget process will improve the government's credibility and trust within the community. In order to have a relationship, there have to be two different parties involved because relationships are reciprocal. Why is this so important? Because trust in the government is at an all-time low. The Pew Research Center has tracked public trust in government since 1958. In 2017, their research said that only 18% of the public trusted government. This can make a relationship between the government and the public quite difficult. One of the first steps in building or rebuilding trust is developing empathy or understanding of what it's like to be in another person's shoes. At this moment, I'm speaking as a member of this community who's interested in the city budget. This administration hasn't shared the proposed tax rate with the people of this community publicly. We don't have the ability to see what you can see in Open Gov. A budget workshop didn't take place. The sustainability report has not been shared publicly. The 36-page budget presentation fails to mention the estimated total revenues for the city of Westfield, despite Councilor Edwards asking for it at the last finance committee meeting. There's been no mention of debt obligation or paying down any debt. Has it slipped your collective minds that this is information people might like to know? I don't know what the city anticipates receiving from either property taxes or local income taxes, but I've got 36 pages that tell me how each department intends to spend their money. Not budget it, not using the word as a verb. It's spending for the sake of spending. Public participation can happen when you don't share information. Concerns about the ethics of a situation, including the budget, allow us to better understand the rationale for government action. Ultimately, as citizens who are affected by multiple public policies every day of our lives, we should not only want to know more about the how and why of their development, but also be able to actively participate if we choose to do so. When it comes to the 2022 budget, this administration has made sure that public participation cannot occur effectively. Government budgeting has some distinctive qualities. Among them is a greater need for transparency, but the way it has been done this year has provided considerably less opportunity for public input, but far greater dominance by this administration. Thank you.
Are there any other individuals I'd like to address, the council? Are there any other individuals I'd like to address the council? Chris, anyone called in?
No emails at this time.
Okay. Hearing done, I will close the auditorium at seven-thirty and open the floor to questions from our councillors.
Mr. Chairman, I've opened Open Gov, and I think it's a, it's a fine tool if, if it is updated properly. But until, just very recently, there weren't sufficient figures in there to make a good judgment. In my opinion, and this is opinion, we should not adopt a budget that exceeds our income, our ability to spend. And to do that, you have to have a pretty good idea of what you're going to receive. I think it's, they've, they've tried to do that a little, but it really needs to be sharpened up so that we can figure out ourselves, is this something that we really want to do? I don't, I don't want to put forward a federal bu, you know, like a federal budget. And I opened it tonight. The income projection was sixty-seven million, nine-hundred-and-sixty-three thousand, eight-hundred-and-thirty-seven dollars. Our expenses were sixty-eight thousand, six-fifty, sixty-eight million, excuse me, six-fifty-six, three-fifty-nine, which leaves a, if my addition or subtraction is correct, a deficit of about seven-hundred thousand dollars. And we need to seal that up. That burden really belongs to the administration to present us something that we can live with. To quote the great philosopher from West Lafayette, Indiana, Earl Butts, there's only one way to pay off debt, and that's profit. Even if you have a non-taxpaying entity like a city, we're going to have to make enough money to pay off our debts. And you don't have to do that all at once, of course, but you do have to do it over time. And I would like to present it on Open Gov so I can contemplate what I think might be right, a proper budget. And that's what we were promised.
I would, I would add to that saying that yesterday afternoon, I got back from a vacation, focused on looking at the budget, figuring out what had happened in the previous week, pulled up Open Gov and saw that we had expenses of seventy-one million, three-hundred-and-sixty-seven thousand, three-hundred-and-thirty, with the same revenue that Joe quoted earlier, or a shortfall of three-point-four million. And I thought about that all night, and somewhere around noon or one or two o'clock today, we have new numbers in, in Open Gov, which showed us, got us down to that seven-hundred thousand dollar deficit. But I guess my, my concern is it's moving up, which, which is right, which is wrong, where, where are we?
If I may, uh, as you know, we have opened up access to a plethora of information like we've never had before. This year is the first year that we've utilized Open Gov as a budget planning tool. The system of record is not Open Gov, it is certainly NAV and whatever is reflected in NAV is the fact, is the fact pattern. I think there's some, there's a, a significant amount of information in Open Gov that may be being viewed inappropriately, not, not on purpose. And I think we would welcome the opportunity to sit down and point you to the correct reports as it relates to the budget. As you know, you can, you can ask where available. Mr. Garitas, I believe, is on the, on, on this call. And so if there are questions related to revenue projections, then we're happy to answer those. As, as it relates to tax rates, as you know, that'll be an advertised high, as it always is. It's not finalized until a DLGF has final say on that. So there's seven of you, you cannot meet but for in, in conditions like this. We're happy to meet with you, answer those questions, explain what those revenue projections are, Mr. Johns, Mr. Edwards, and anybody that sits on this panel.
What are they, Todd? I mean, because what are they? Well, I mean, what, what are the revenue, what, because the expenses now are at seventy-two million. It's actually a different number than what these guys have.
No, I point to the document that was sent out, I believe, week and a half, two weeks ago, with those revenue projections. I don't know what document that Mr. Edwards was looking at.
I just looked on Open Gov.
But there's a hard copy document that I sent out via the Liquid Files link. And if Mr. Garitas is on, on the call, he can, he can weigh in on that.
I even spent an afternoon going through and trying to piece together the general fund and all the Garitas income items so that I could, you know, come close to what I was seeing on Open Gov. Well, I wasn't close. And that, that kind of, you know, worried me. Am I, am I using wrong, incorrect figures or what, what's going on here? I don't suspect anybody's doing anything purposely wrong, but I just want to know what's what.
Sure. Greg, are you on the call?
Yeah, I'm on the teams, yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, so you sent out the sustainability, I believe, Todd?
Correct.
On the sustainability, has each fund broken down revenues and expenses in astronomical detail?
Greg, so
Yes.
Since you have in front of you, what are the revenue numbers on that and what are the expense numbers on that? Because those don't tie to Open Gov and some of them don't, at the time, were not the same ones that we got in the NAV, uh, that were the initial amounts. They've actually changed.
Okay, what was published in, and Open Gov, I, I agree, has changed. We have worked very closely with the Clerk Treasurer's office. What is in Gateway and on Form Three for the general fund I'm looking at is thirty-one million, three-three-seven. General fund. The revenue for the general fund in 2022 is projected to be thirty million, two-seventy-four. We told you very early on, we were putting in capital into the 2022 budget. And so the thirty-one, three-three-seven includes no GO, but it does include the capital request, especially from Public Works and Police. We'd have to move to the FIRE to get to the FIRE numbers. But those match up to what Cindy has, what the Clerk Treasurer has, you know, on Form Three and is being advertised to the general public.
Okay, overall, what's the overall expected revenue number and the overall expense number?
I, I, I don't have, I thought we even had that in one presentation. I thought we had it in the back of the presentation.
It's not.
It's not, okay. So I don't have a grand total here, it, Form Three, there it is, sixty-three million, nine-nine-three, but I don't have a grand total of all the revenue because this thirty million's only property taxes. So I would have to add that up. I don't have it.
I would, I would like to just echo really what Joe's saying. I mean, I've never done a budget and presented to anybody without having the actual numbers, the final numbers. I mean, I mean, here's the revenues, here's the expenses, here's our up, here's our down, here's where we're short, here's where we're long. I mean, for heaven's sake, I mean, this, this, this is not, this, we aren't the first people to do a budget, right?
We do it by fund, though. We do it by fund, not in grand total. Because, you know, so you have to, DLGF requires it in funds, so we have, we do it in total by funds.
Okay, if I have a business, I actually break out my budget into marketing. I break out my revenues as, into valuation business, M and A business. I do the same thing, okay, but at least, but I actually budget out the numbers. So at the end of the day, I think is what Joe is saying, I mean, just to reiterate this, is what is the total revenues we're expecting and what's the total expenses we're expecting? And we want a balanced budget, simple.
Okay.
And that includes capital, that includes police cars. I've talked to Chief Rush, I mean, I've talked to, I've talked to different people. I, I just want to see a balanced budget. That's it.
Okay, a balanced budget with the ask of a, over, over six million or seven million of capital, with the capital included, it will not be a balanced budget from that concept. We said very early on in the workshop that we were doing a allocation of our cash resources and not do a general obligation bond, but spend our cash resources, some of them, to make up for the fact that we're not doing a GO and we're doing the, those expenses from cash.
Yeah, so let me reiterate. Including all your expenses, capital obligations, et cetera, I would like to see a balanced budget because you can't keep borrowing more than you bring in every single year. You'll have an increasing perpetual debt system.
We are not obligating, having a general obligation bond this year.
Correct.
It's not been proposed. So where, what I said was, we were using an allocation of our cash in order to not do a bond issue, and we were using that to program into the capital needs.
I think I've stated my position, so anybody else?
I think if you look at this budget, the, the people cost is about half of everything. In other words, payroll, benefits, I mean, we gotta, we gotta do that. We have to do it correctly. And I, I would like for Mr. Garitas to put together kind of a summary for, for me anyhow about how, you know, if we're over on capital, we might have to bite the bullet if we got the cash, but you can't do that year in and year out. You just can't, you can't do it. I don't know if you can, I don't know, I don't know what the answer is. But I'd like to know where we are and, you know, if we, if we do have to buy a, a fire truck or what, or cars, we always got to buy something like that. How much, how much is, are we over and what are we sacrificing to get that? I mean, you, you either put people in or you put machines in and, and.
And, and we can, we can create a one-page document, show that tomorrow, and get you, get you that tomorrow and, and spell it out. I mean, you just have to ask and we'll get it the way you want it. But we will be showing the, this year, and as I said, in 2022, we are going to use this allocation of cash. But in 2022 for 2023, we may not use that strategy. So I, I've said that time and time again, we're trying to do this on an annual basis and look at it.
Well, the difficulty, and I, I'm not faulting the, the report, but if you have to put all these funds together, sometimes they're income funds and sometimes they're not. And you, you have to know, fund by fund by fund by fund, what in the world's going on? You can, if you say that's not, that's not money we're going to receive that we are entitled to spend, then we oughtn't to put it in the report if it's designated for something. So if you, if you can break that down and kind of summarize it for me, maybe the rest of them would appreciate it, I, I don't know, I cer, I certainly would. It took me two hours to go through all those funds and try to add that stuff up.
Well, and we can do that, and keep in mind that this is, what you're seeing on the screen is only the required front, funds from DLGF. And in the sustainability, we broke it down to over twenty-five funds.
But that's, but that's, that's the money that we're spending, though.
Both of them are the money you're spending.
Yeah, both of them are money that we are spending.
Yeah, the Form Three, and then we're showing you the entire picture in the sustainability.
But we've got to make an informed decision. And you can't do that without the information. And you can help us get it.
Yes, sir.
Greg, this is Jake Gilbert. I've got a question, I've, I've just not asked you directly. I've talked to council members, I've talked to the administration. So if we were to agree on all the, the capital outlays, what's your position on the cash? I know you've been a, a big GO bond supporter and have not gotten a ton of support from the council. But coming off the security, the, like, last year with the uncertainty with COVID, I guess my question is, if we spend that much cash on the capital outlays, what do you think of our cash position regarding rainy day fund?
Well, and Jake, I, I look at it as all the funds together. You got to kind of look at the, and I'm not trying to muddy the water. But we're taking some out of general fund, we're using some out of the FIRE fund. We're trying to set up the pay-as-you-go in the CCD fund. And we're absolutely not touching the rainy day fund. So the overall good, I actually like it. I actually thought we've got a great plan. And for some of the public input, as you know, we are recommending the TURF lease be paid down. We're recommending several of the TIF bonds be paid down. We're recommending a lot of things there for us to get. An overall then, to answer your question, I feel satisfied as long as we are not saying, no GO forever ever amen. You know, that would not be good. I think we've come to a spot where we are comfortable with our, especially in the general fund, that I believe a controlled allocation of our cash, our equity, is proper and can be done on a year-by-year basis at this point.
And one more question, if you don't mind.
Sure.
To the sailor's point, on the paying down of debt, like you just mentioned, two or three things, that, that is something that maybe escaped me in the presentations. So while you're putting together the one pager, that, that would be my ask.
Well, and that is directly in the sustainability under debt management. And there's the, we make four, over five comments on the debt management.
Gotcha.
And we have been asking, we are trying to get you the TURF lease, uh, requ, you know, the resolution to get that paid down. And then I, I, I don't control Jake, I don't work with you directly on the TIF ones, but the other ones were direct comments on the TIF ones. And so those are ones that we, we may need your other consultants' help on.
Okay, that, that's, those are the ones, I guess, I'm asking about. So maybe we can get that, I'll deal with the administration, I guess, thank you.
I can say on the TURF lease, October eleventh, there'll be a resolution for you to consider. It's a payoff of one-point-six million and change.
And as you recall, I was suggesting that we use CCD cash and then we have CCD cash for equipment or, um, equipment leases going forward. Again, trying to respond to an overall plan of, of debt and equity.
About three years down the road, we got to pay for State Road Thirty-two, cut our part of it. And we're going to need a big boatload of money then. I, I'm not sure we know exactly how much because bids haven't been let yet. But we, we've got to be careful about what we do. We're walking a tightrope right now, I think.
That's why it's important to have a balanced budget. Even with the capital outlays, and we're not talking about the fire station. Hey, we'd finance the fire station. I don't think anybody disagrees on that, right? I mean, things like that. But there's no sense in financing, you know, things that don't need financed over the period of, of life. I mean, we're, we're, I mean, if, if we need more police cars, we'll, heck, let's, sorry, let's cut a bunch of legal expenses that we have here in the city. I can't imagine anybody disagree with that, except for the attorneys, right? I mean, so.
I agree with Troy. I think we need a balanced budget. And I would like to, hopefully, before next meeting, have a balanced budget presented to the council for approval. There is, I mean.
I, I'm not sure I understand, I'm not sure I understand the language we're using here. By state statute, we have to have a balanced budget. Do we not? Do I, am I missing something? What are we?
I think succinctly, we, we've presented revenue matching expenses. What is outside of that, as we said in the last meeting, are those capital outlays? We're not, we are not suggesting, as we have. We're not, we are not suggesting, as we have in the past, using G O bond as a cash drawdown. You do have, as I think I pushed it out, a summary sheet from Mr. Garitas, it was late July, about a debt management strategy that involves the C C D fund, that's, that's in your possession. So, one way to get there, uh, I think you, there is a finance committee meeting on the 5th now, is it not? There have been recommendations made by Councilor Patton. There'll be further dialogue about that and, and as Mr. Garitas fine-tunes this before you're, you're faced with taking a vote at your next meeting. One quick way to do that is negate all the capital outlays. Revenues match expenses. That is a path, not suggesting that is the path, but as a path. So succinctly, is, to your point, we've recommended, we've, we have presented revenues matching expenses as we know them, as we sit here today, net of or exclusive of those capital outlays, which is roughly $8 million, representing two years' worth, 21 and 22. So, I think you can beleaguer this further, there's further conversation we're gonna have in the finance meeting, I'm sure, and then in the days to come.
And by the way, Todd, that's not necessarily the path that we're saying, we're not saying.
No, I know that, I'm, I'm not, I'm not saying that at all.
We're saying.
That's my words.
No, I know, I, I, I know it is, right? And I'll just kind of, I wanna call you out on that a little bit by saying, we're not saying get rid of the capital outlays. What, what, alls we're saying is, give us a balanced budget. If, if there, there's other things, if there's other areas to cut, then so be it.
Yeah, yeah, my words shouldn't be misconstrued, no need to call me out. I'm just saying simply, simply, that's what's imbalanced here. That's what's caused the imbalance. So are there ar, other areas? We can certainly look at those. Will it make up $8 million worth of, of projected capital outlays for 21 and 22? Most likely not, without a massive disruption of service.
Before the finance committee meeting is what I would probably ask, is that Greg or yourself go through that budget again, because it is negative right now. I mean, I mean, forget the capital outlays, it's still actually negative.
Is that what, go ahead, Greg.
No, I, I, I don't, you, you're gonna have to show me that negative number.
Yeah.
Because I don't believe there's a negative number. Where's the negative number?
So with that, if you would, so we're all looking at literally the same page that you're looking at, so then we can translate or transfer that to Mr. Garitas, we can all have a, an intersection of what we understand to be true as we stand here today.
So maybe we should get, I mean, just a suggestion, so maybe we should have Misha update us with all the, I mean, 'cause this is changed from, from before.
What we, well, they've been changed 400 times, so we, what we, Misha sent you last week was.
On 9/15?
Yes, that was what we had, and we was, they were working with Chris today, and that's his numbers in OpenGov if I'm not mistaken, Chris, incorrect. They matched what Carrie and Misha had, and that's where you're getting the 14 million over budget with the expenses and the revenue.
Yeah, yeah, so, something's not right.
Right, well, I, I think it's important to note, the system of record is the system of record. So OpenGov, we've just used as a budget planning portal. There's no interface between OpenGov and NAV at this point in time, those are manual entries. So, update, or if you would, send us what you're seeing, the deficit number, and let's get an email thread going with Mr. Garitas, we can all literally be on the same actual page. Fair enough?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
We're all to work off of NAV, though, not OpenGov, is what you're saying.
Yeah.
Well, it's not in NAV yet, because it's not final.
No, it's just in the spreadsheets that Misha has.
Right, it's just what we, yes.
The important thing that OpenGov performs right now for you is to see in real time as departments go in, add or reduce appropriations in the granular detail on the expense side, what is, what they're programming in their budgets. The revenues, the system of record is the system of record. So for these purposes, we need to rely on what Misha sends us?
Yes, what she sent you last week, yes. But the totals that we gave you today in the email are the correct numbers.
Say that again, please.
What we sent you today in the email are the correct numbers.
And, and again, that's where revenue is 83 million rounded off, rounded off, and expenses of 97 million, roughly.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
And Cindy, you didn't email that to me, did you?
Oh, I was looking in the audience for him. No, I didn't. I believe, though, that they took the numbers that you had given them to put in Gateway. So we'll need to talk to you tomorrow, Misha and Carrie, and go back over.
Needless to say, we have a lot of work to do.
Counselors, any other comments?
So as, Todd, as I understand this, then, we will have the numbers, the final numbers, or is there a date when we'll have your attention?
Everything will be updated as we have it, before you take your vote next month for the budget ordinance.
And will we have that like the Friday before we take the vote?
Well, as soon as we can possibly, I just need to make sure we're all literally on the same page, because we're seeing $700,000 in, in, in the red versus what Mr. Garitas is reflecting. So let me get through that benchmark first. It's important to understand that, that stormwater revenues are restricted, there's stormwater expenses. So that's when, when Mr. Garitas says funds, that's what it's, it's, it's specific to that activity or that service delivery. So, again, go ahead.
And Todd, if I may, we have a $250,000 budget set in the rainy day. If you look at the details, and as we've always explained, there are no revenues in the rainy day fund. But we do not expect the run, to spend the 250, we put that as an emergency line item. So you could say that's out of balance by $250,000, but it's, that's incorrect.
Okay, we'll circulate, expect those things to be circulated tomorrow, Mr. Garitas get his head on it, and then get it back out to you ASAP. Thank you.
That's not my dog. I guess I would just add, as we, as we look at the budget and we finalize this, in my own mind, I wanna make sure that we pin things down as much as we can and to the most minuscule extent possible. I, I recall, and I might be wrong, but last year when we did the budget, it was a COVID year, and at that point in time, we weren't sure what the revenues were gonna be coming in. We knew that it was probably gonna hit us in 2022. We knew that 2021 was gonna be an iffy type of a year. But I think it was this council that said, we don't wanna lose any city employees. We wanna keep everybody we have. And, and, and I think we made a recommendation that salaries be frozen for the year, but we weren't gonna lose anybody, and does, do you guys recall that? We did say that, didn't we?
Yes.
Okay, well, I, I noticed that there were actually 31 raises given during the course of the year. And, and, and that gives me concern as to its integrity.
Well, I'm sorry you feel that way, Mr. Jones. I've spoken about this, I mentioned to Mr., to Patton, Mr. Patton on the, on the pre-council call. Those, and I have the documentation from the directors, so it's not a matter of integrity. It's a matter of employees being at a, at benchmark of time for a step grade according to our pay plan, the Archer study. So it wasn't a carte blanche increase in salaries. There've been people with additional responsibilities that have added to their position. And it's all within the accordance of that Archer study and capacity in that budget. So I'm not sure why you would question it as a matter of integrity, because we did not give a carte blanche raise across the board. This council authorized a 27th pay.
We did.
Yeah, and that's what we adhered to. Now, if there are further questions about specific employees receiving increases, I'm happy to have directors come and address those, because they're the ones responsible for entering those in and, and approving those.
It was mine, I guess, again, we need to button it down, because I didn't realize when we made that agreement, which I thought was a fairly reasonable request, that there was the Archer study, which was going to affect some employees, but not other employees. I mean, it's, it's like, we got 31 people that got something that the rest of our employees didn't get.
Well, because you have police officers at a benchmark of time, they go from a five-year officer to a six-year officer, which necessitates a pay increase.
I understand, we had three police officers and two firemen, but the other 26 individuals were city employees.
With added responsibilities. I'll have the director come up here and address those if you'd like, or at a later time. Or when we, when we talk about the salary ordinance later this year, as part of our, the approval process, happy to have the director come up here and defend why he or she made those recommendations and the associated increase in responsibilities.
The ordinance 2141, budget presentation, will be up for adoption, consideration on October 11th. Moving on to new business, resolution 21-132, common council declaring a certain area within the city an economic revitalization area, qualifying certain real property improvements for tax abatement and setting the timing place for the public hearing regarding the same. Uh, this is up for council introduction this evening, and adaption consideration October 11th. I believe Kai Chuck will also present this.
Thank you, President Jones. Good evening, counselors, again, Kai Chuck, the Economic Development Department. I'm here to introduce the Ortho Indy's request for 10-year tax abatement on their new facility and also establish an economic revitalization area. My apologies, uh, Ortho Indy is planning on building a 15,289 square foot facility, approximately on six acres on approximately US 32, State Road 32 at Australian Pines, P U D, near Australian Pine Way, directly east of Belt Tire and directly west of, I believe that's the post office. This investment will retain 15 jobs and create eight new jobs. Jim Ake is the representative for the company, and he plans to do a presentation. Both he and myself will be available for questions.
Good evening, counselors. For the record, my name is Jim Ake, and I reside at 543 Potomac Court in Westfield, Indiana, and I'm here to represent and support O I's request to establish an economic revitalization zone and to consider a new net real property tax abatement. This is an introduction tonight, and I want to just share a few thoughts briefly, and then I'll open up for questions. Ortho Indy has been in Westfield over five years and recognizes the need to expand their operations and to grow along with our community. O I's current space is inadequate to serve the volume of patients they are now seeing efficiently. Demand has outstripped their capacity in their 4,300 current, uh, square foot facility next to Titus Bakery in leased space. Demand is, uh, they are seeing more age-related patients, the 55 and older crowd, as this population segment expands, along with the ever-growing amount of visitations to Grand Park, who tend to seek medical attention from a clinic rather than an E R. Along with me tonight is Jimmy Clark with Cornerstone LLC. They are the developer and construction manager for this project. O I, as of now, is waiting for the plat to be signed and D P W approval. These are in process, and closing is anticipated sometime in October. O I's new building will be located, as we heard earlier, just west of the post office on State Road 32. They will almost triple their capacity, expand their scope of services to serve our community. I have met with each of you in person or by phone with the other count, and each of you received an executive summary regarding our request. I appreciate all your previous comments, and now would be happy to answer any questions about this project you maybe have, you may have, and tonight is an introduction only. So I'd like to hear from you and respond to those types of questions.
Jim, this is a for-profit medical facility.
That is correct.
So they, it's not a not-for-profit deal?
That's correct.
I got a question, Jim. So this is a triple net lease, is it not? They're not actually gonna be owning this space, are they?
No, they will own the building.
Okay, so I was told that that's not the case.
No, their old was a triple net lease at their old facility, and the 4,300 square foot they rent from, um, the group there, Nexetitus.
They're gonna own and occupy this one.
That is correct.
Right.
I have another comment about the, uh, lack of convention, if you will, on the percentages. This is, this is another one that I'm seeing where it's not a graduated abatement request. And I wanna understand why that is. I mean, it's, it's not typical that I'm aware of to be doing these, these non-graduated abatements. So, just wanna put that out there and ask why.
Okay, the, the, the way this was structured was to accommodate the council's request for net new, and then we worked with Chuck Kai, who might be able to address this better than I can. However, saying that, we respect council's wishes, and we would ask that you kind of look to each other in the coming week before, two weeks, before we come back to you, and see what you would think or what you would like to see. And if we can structure that way, we are open to that.
So, to address Counselor Spolterick's question, uh, this is not the correct scale here for this. This is just, because I had received on Friday late the correct tax that the current O I pays on their facility. So we adjusted that according to the schedule. So the schedule, I believe Jim had sent you, on Friday, uh, is the correct schedule, because we had submitted this prior to that, we could not change it. But since this is an introduction, then we'll correct it on the future, uh, resolution. But I do reiterate what Jim has commented on, on the counselor's input on whatever they feel that is comfortable with in terms of the tax increment, of the tax abatement.
Thank you, Kai.
It's just a side note for me, I guess, as part of an ongoing conversation. I know this is not the first time I've made this comment. Having a, a city and city council policy regarding incentives and having that be something that's actually approved by this council, providing everybody the same information moving forward in terms of incentives we provide and how those will be handled, I, I'd really like to see that. That happens in most other communities, and I think it's something we should work on.
In a similar vein, I'd just like to point out or confirm, again, I think I heard this, I just wanna make sure that we're absolutely on the same page. The only portion that's considered for the abatement is the new space. So we'd be removing the square footage, essentially, the equivalent of the square footage from their current location.
That is correct, that is correct. We ascertained the property tax records that they had paid in over, in 2020, and it was 28. We ascertained the property tax records that they had paid in over, in 2020 and it was 28,000. So we would forego 280,000 over the 10 years.
And the, I guess I would just add that while I'm not a big proponent of tax abatement in TIF areas, I, 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 I do think that a lot of, unfortunately, or fortunately, a lot of Westfield today isn't a TIF area. So I think tax abatement becomes a realistic item that we, an issue that we need to address. In this particular case, I mean, earlier this, this evening, I came out against the tax debate in the Grand Park area. This, to me, is a different area. It's not Grand Park. Every, 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 every ordinance that comes before us needs to be looked at on its own merits. And I look, I would look favorably on this area for a tax abatement.
Yeah, and to be clear, I want to state publicly that this is not located in a TIF area.
Okay, Jim, I guess that's it for now. Thank you for the introduction.
Well, I appreciate your time tonight, gentlemen, and feel free to give me a call. Talk about it, the abatement structure with, with Kai. I think we're on the right track here and it'll serve our community well for any number of reasons. Thank you.
Appreciate you.
Thank you, Jim.
And we'll see Jim back here on October 11. Next item on the agenda is resolution 21-133, confirmatory resolution confirming declaration of a certain area within the city of Westfield an economic revitalization area. Up for council introduction this evening with a public hearing to be held on October 25 and adoption consideration also on October 25.
This is just a supplement to a necessary requirement for the previous resolution.
Questions, comments? Moving on to our last item of new business, ordinance 21-42, appropriation of additional funds. Up for council introduction this evening, adoption consideration on October 11.
This is just, as you noted in your last meeting, this is addressing the overages in these two particular appropriations. The balances reflect there not only take care of the deficit, but should give us the needed capacity we'll operate in with, at or under for the remainder of the part of this year. This is just an introduction. No action required of you tonight. It'll be, I think, a public hearing at your next meeting and up for consideration thereafter.
Questions or council, comments from counselors?
How are we estimating what would be needed for the rest of the year based solely on retainer?
Yes, anything that's known activities like the analysis on a non-TIF project or just like condemnations that are still outstanding. So those are legal things that fall, typically fall outside of the, the normal retainer. But things that, known activities that are in the pipeline at this, at this point.
I, I would, I would also probably add, Todd, I mean, I'd like to, I'd like to see where the money is actually coming from as well. I mean, put it in the ordinance, I mean, what, what area we're taking it from. Recital 5. Put it in the ordinance, please.
It's a recital 5 with the ordinance.
And then, and then it, and then also, I probably, as it sits currently, I would not, I would not vote for this. Because I, I think, I, I think section 2 is, should be removed, so.
Okay, since it's been introduced, need your comments.
Yeah.
If you forward back to us and we can do our best to incorporate those. Okay.
Any other questions, comments? Hearing none, we will look forward to adoption consideration at our next meeting. Do we have any guests this evening who would like to address the council? I think we have one, for sure.
Linda Nasse, 1122 East 161th Street. The things I wanted to talk about really didn't hit into any category previously. But I know that monthly the Clerk Treasurers Office is putting out an appropriation report summary. I also know from talking to people such as William Knox that he can go into his NAV system he has access to any day and tell what's in every line item of his fund. So therefore, I think a lot of other people within the departments and administration who have that ability can do the same thing. So he knows when he's over budget, when he's not over budget. You don't very often find him over budget. I don't think you will this year. I've sat down with him twice. I'm impressed that he pays attention to budget lines. So when I was looking at, and the RDC is going to have to take this up, we were shown a Grand Park budget. And I do have access to OpenGov as an RDC person, so I have more information than a lot of people do. Unfortunately, the public don't, doesn't have this information. They can't, they can't hardly speak to any of these issues. But we did receive a, a PowerPoint presentation of the Grand Park Sports Campus 640 account that has the, had the 22 budget, the revenue amount, the expenses amount and the net operating revenue that do not, any three of them match what's in OpenGov. And yet, William and I have gone through this line by line, opening OpenGov together. So I know that what he put into OpenGov and was marked as approved and has his name on it is real, but it's not what I'm seeing in a presentation. The other thing is, it doesn't really speak to your appropriation, but as you go through for this evening, but if you go through the appropriation summary put out every month, and I can't get it on a daily basis, but a lot of people can. I do know how many line items at the end of August were over budget, near over budget, or way over budget. Okay, we are eight months through the year at that point, two-thirds of the year way through. But if you go to these budgets, we don't have a third of the budget left. Now, I realize some of them only get paid once a year, twice a year, certain thing. But at the end of August, when the general fund had 10% of its budget left, 10% at the end of August. And I know you can make appropriations and maybe you'll make more and more and more. But on September 13th, you approved some, some claims, disapproved others or let them ride till later. And then tonight, you approve more claims. Just based on those three numbers, we are again minus $13,680.68 going on the numbers that I can get from the Clerk Treasurers Office and from the claims reports. And we're told that those are accurate. So I'm getting, you know, we're told, hey, there's going to be a public hearing. But you can't have a public hearing if you don't have information. I'm sorry, it doesn't work that way. And I did look up, and I hope Garretas gives you something because I looked up those numbers that he was talking about. And actually, last year, let's see if I can get this to the point where I can see it. Last year, we, in, in the budget for 2021, we said we were going to appropriate X number of dollars for $29,000 in revenue on the general 101 account. And then we said on that same page, which is right off Garretas's stuff, which again, the public can't always get these things, says that we're going to spend 22 million. So out of 29 revenues and 22 million, we'd be in pretty good shape. However, I go to the next line for, this, this year, and we're going to appropriate revenues of 30 million. And you guys read the number earlier, but we're going to spend 31 million. So just in that one fund, we're over budget. It's not a balanced budget. So my concern is, and I think Marla spoke to, if you want public involved or you care for any of them to be concerned about any topics on the agendas, you got to give us some information. And the information you give us, we have to trust it. And I, I've known for years that the Clerk Treasurers Office every month puts out documents. They put out an appropriation summary, they put out a revenue report, they put out a fund report. And I read those every month and maybe people don't, but I'm an accountant and a numbers person by background. And I'm also concerned about my city and my community and what I'm seeing and what I'm seeing coming up. And I lived through here, as many people did, the 2008 downturn where we lost a lot of money. And it took us years to get back to that number again. So that could always happen again. So it, it concerns me, but just hearing you all talk this evening about, nobody seems to agree on what the numbers are. So how would you expect us to speak to them? And don't tell us, you know, there's 40, over 46,400 residents here. I know they're not adults, but I'm pretty sure we have people who can do math. So don't tell us that we don't understand this stuff. Because a lot of it's just add, subtract, you know, compare numbers. And every year, our NAV goes up and we get that from the county. And our NAV is going up considerably again this year. So everybody's taxes are going up this year because their NAV is going up. But do we consider, hey, maybe we should lower the tax rate so we won't have to pay any more than we paid last year? Because when NAV goes up, hey, some of the people on fixed budgets, and I have many friends like that, they don't know how they're going to pay that. But we don't hear that talked about here. We don't hear about tax rate. We don't hear it from the administration. We're not hearing it in the discussions tonight. I'm hearing a lot of defensive talk, but we know our NAV is going up and everybody's like, oh, that's great. That's only great if you're selling. Most of these people are living here and they can't hardly make it. And yes, we're the wealthiest and we're the fastest growing city. And if we are, then why are we begging for so much business to come? And why are we thinking, it doesn't, it just doesn't matter? Because we do have people here living on budgets and people here who just can't take another. And I don't want to see them lose their homes. And I saw what happened in 2008 and a lot of people lost their homes or had to move. So this, and this 8 million plus dollars in capital outlays and bonds. Normally, when the bond is presented, it's presented on, hey, we're going to spend this over two or three years. So give us a $5 million bond. That's as big as it's gotten recently. Now this year, they're saying, hey, give us over $8 million in next year's budget. Really? They're going to spend $8 million next year? No, maybe we ought to spread that out. So nothing matches up. Nothing is logical. Nothing follows a pattern. And the people get confused. And it's not just me standing here talking because I've talked to a lot of people and I just lost another friend who moved out of here because he was so frustrated with how this city is handling the business of the city. And I'm not directing that as you, the new council. And I think you should understand that many of you got elected because of the problems we've been experiencing with budgets and other issues. So I hope y'all can get the numbers that you need. I hope you have the time to look at them. And I'm hopeful that something better is coming for this community because I don't like seeing my friends move. I don't like seeing them frustrated and I don't like them seeing about how much they're going to, worrying about how much they're going to have to pay next year. And maybe it's just going to put them right over the top. So thank you for your time.
Do we have anyone else who'd like to speak for the council? Cindy Gass, do you have any comments?
I do not tonight.
Counselors, counselor comments? Cindy Spoljerik, you have a report about?
On APC, yeah, we had a actual very short meeting, so I won't have to be late tonight. So on the 20th, September 20th, we had two detailed development plans. One was for the Neil Barn Road commercial, which is the IMI project, you might remember. And also Cornerstone Church Parking, which is Centennial Bible Church. They're doing a parking lot expansion. And we also did approve the overall development plan, primary plat for Osborne Trails Phase 2. That was it.
Any other comments? Okay, I have only, I guess, one comment this evening. And it's just that I, I'm, I share with you my frustration. It's not having some of the numbers I would have liked to have for the presentation and the budget tonight. I think as a council, I think we're embarrassed that we don't have the numbers. I'm embarrassed I didn't have the numbers to share with you. And I am hopeful that by the next gathering here, that we will have the numbers early enough that we can look at them, review them, understand them, and we'll be able to make some good recommendations at, at the budget approval. So that said, if there's no other comments, I will close the meeting. Thank you.